Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance empowers this board to hear references from the city council, applications for variances and special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, we will either make a final determination or send out a recommendation to the city council. Present here with me tonight are board members Mary Beth Burns, Clara Weinberg, Matthew Rogers, and I am your current chair Lori Summers. Also here tonight from city staff are Martin Travis and Melissa Klotz. This is a formal hearing and we have rules that govern our proceedings. Our most important rule is that only one person may speak at a time without interruption. It is not just civility but it is necessary to accurately record our proceedings. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have an opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our normal procedure is that we hear first from the staff on the documents in the file. We will then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. After the applicant or repellent has completed their initial submission, any person who has a legal interest in real property located within 500 feet of the property that is the subject of the application or appeal may then present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. Next, others who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. When all opposing testimony and other statements have been received, the applicant or repellent will be given an opportunity for rebuttal or for closing statement. Board members may ask questions of anyone offering testimony or statements at any time. All testimony and statements will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, we do ask that you limit your testimony or statement to your own personal knowledge. When you testify or make a statement, please tell us your name and address, and if you have not done so, make sure that you sign up on the pad that was out at the entrance. Because we do not have a court reporter, it is imperative that you speak at a microphone so that your testimony or statement can be recorded. We are audio and video recorded, so please make sure that you get to a microphone either at a podium or if necessary, we do have a roaming microphone that we can use. When all the testimony, other evidence, and statements have been received, we will close the record and begin our deliberations. We usually try to adjourn by 11:00 PM. Any matter not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next meeting. We also generally do not start cases after 10:00, and we have a full agenda tonight, so I will ask everyone to be polite to your neighbors, try to be succinct, and we will do our best to get through as much as we can. Just to run through really quickly, our first agenda item is 2221 Jenks Street as the applicant here. And are there others who wish to speak to us on this matter? Thank you. And 914 and a half Noise Street. Steph, I believe we have a request for a continuance on this matter?
Yes, until the February 7th.
Your microphone.
Until the February 7th zoning board meeting.
And that's from the applicant?
Correct.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to that request for continuance? Seeing none, is there a motion or discussion from the board?
I would move that in the matter ZBA 11ZMJV0078 regarding 914 and a half Noise Street, that we continue action on that matter until our regularly scheduled meeting on February 7th.
Second. It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It's been unanimously carried, so 914 and a half Noise Street will be heard on our February 7th meeting. 1629 Orington Avenue is the applicant here?
Yes.
And is there anyone else who wishes to speak to us on that case? See a few hands, thank you. And 1803 Grant Street, is the applicant here? And is there anyone else who wishes to speak to us on that case? Okay, thank you. All right, our first item tonight then is 20... Sorry. Oh, do you want to...we can do that first. Did everyone get a chance to read their minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
Do you want to hold off to the end?
No, it's fine.
Are there any corrections? I didn't happen to notice any. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I would move that we approve the minutes as recorded for our Tuesday, December 6, 2011 meeting.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried, the minutes are approved. And then on to 2221 Jenks Street, if you could read into the record, please. Ms. Renata Seidel appeals the zoning administrator's decision to grant zoning relief, case number 11ZMN-V-0058, from section 6-4-6-7-D of the zoning ordinance that states, "Any repair or replacement of a legal nonconforming fence shall neither increase the nonconformity nor create any new noncompliance." The applicant was granted relief to replace the existing four-foot fence of 30% to 70% opacity with a 6% fence with 0%. The zoning board of appeals is the determining body for this case. Submitted with the application for the appeal are the following documents. Original permit documents for replacing an existing fence. Fence variation application submitted July 21, 2011. Standards form. Appeal application submitted October 19, 2011. Zoning analysis. Platte survey dated December 15, 2011. Photographs. Opposition letters. And support letters, which include the two additional letters that were distributed at the beginning of the meeting. Okay, and Ms. Seidel? If you could come up to the microphone, and what I'm going to do is I'm actually going to swear you in. If I could swear in everyone, anyone else who wishes or thinks they may possibly speak to us this evening on this case, if you could raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. Ms. Seidel.
Thank you. I'm Renata Seidel, and this is my brother Mark Seidel, and we're actually here jointly representing our father, Wilbert Seidel, who has resided at 2675 Stewart since 1954. My brother and I also grew up in this house, and our father is elderly, and we're here with his permission...
Excuse me, Ms. Seidel.
Yes.
Could you speak a little closer to the microphone? I don't know that they're picking you up.
Okay, how far back should I go?
Actually, fine, right there.
Okay. So, our father is elderly, and we're here with his permission, and also in our capacities of his powers of attorney. We have joint power of attorney. I just wanted to begin by saying I wasn't aware that there were two additional letters regarding the case, and I wonder if we eventually will get copies of those, or...okay. And we do have some exhibits that we'd like to share. Does you need, what, five copies?
And we're going to call this Appellants A. And do you have a copy for Ms. Dor...is Ms. Dorward here?
No.
Do you have a copy for Ms. Dorward, please? Thank you. Well, these are the new ones.
This person's already been...it's already written before.
Yeah, one of these letters was already in the file.
Oh, okay, there may have been a mistake.
Right, and we haven't seen the second one before. We want to thank you first for the opportunity to bring this appeal. We know you have many more important zoning matters to deliberate than a tall side yard fence that extends to the sidewalk, and we appreciate your time, and we'll try to be concise. And my brother and I are alternating with different points, if that's all right.
I will describe the exhibits to you. The first page in our exhibits is a timeline showing relevant dates and actions. We thought this might be helpful since the case, which we actually thought was quite simple, goes back nine months now. To give some orientation, the next page, Exhibit B, is an image from the GIS link provided on the zoning office website. Our house is marked by the blue arrow. It faces Stewart and sits on the corner of Jenks. The fence in question was built by Ms. Tammy Dorward in the adjoining property, which is marked by the red arrow. Her house faces Jenks. Her house also sits on an alley that bisects that lot...that block. Note that the property shown to the northwest of us extends the length of both our properties, as do all of the houses on Stewart and continuing on to Walnut. In the next picture, Exhibit C, we've drawn red lines where Ms. Dorward constructed two fences last April. We've also added from Google images of the garage, driveway, and patio built in her yard since this GIS picture was uploaded. These structures are also not shown in the platte of survey which Ms. Dorward submitted to the zoning office and which may be in your file. The structure in question is basically the portion of the fence which extends from the garage to the street. According to Evanston Zoning, a fence built in a side yard cannot extend beyond the front face or facade of a house. It must end at least three feet from the front. If you'll hold this page so that the word "alley" is at the top, you'll have the perspective from which the next photos were taken. You'll basically be looking from the blue arrow up towards the red line. So the next page, Exhibit D, shows the view from the back of our house toward the side yard of 2221 Jenks. It was taken long before Ms. Dorward moved in, and we've included it just so you can see how expansive our view was at one time, and why we valued this neighborhood so much. These two properties were originally one, so both of our yards are smaller than others on Stewart. A short fence was eventually built between our properties primarily to keep children from cutting across the yards when they came home from school. The photos on the next page, Exhibit E, are taken from the same position. The first one shows the view from our backyard toward Jenks when Ms. Dorward moved in. You can see four-foot fences with open slats along her border with us, and also with the Carlsons next door. Mr. Carlson is on the left mowing his lawn, providing some evidence of the fence height. In this photo, you can see also the so-called hedge atop all of the fences which Ms. Dorward refers to in her application. You can also see a shed which she removed and replaced with a garage. Ms. Dorward took down the fence between our properties and the greenery without informing us, and built the taller opaque fence you see in the picture at the bottom. This picture also shows the new garage, but the patio extending to her house cannot be seen.
Now, I'd like to give you just a quick history of the permit issue itself. When I first saw this fence in mid-April, I knew that a variance should have been required, and was surprised that neighbors had not been informed. I became familiar with zoning codes relating to side yards reluctantly after Ms. Dorward built her garage. We're actually still wondering how this could have been built without a variance and notice to neighbors, but that isn't material here. The zoning code allows a fence to be built in this location, but only if it replaces a pre-existing one, and only if it is neither taller nor more opaque than the pre-existing one. You can see from the photos that the fence does not meet either of these requirements. On April 20, I visited the zoning office and discussed the case in detail with Mr. Martin Travis. He informed me that in fact our neighbor had not applied for any permit. He posted a stop work order. Ms. Dorward then applied for a permit to replace, quote, "an existing fence." However, the permit was then granted without neighbors being notified for input. Our neighbors, the Carlsons, and I became aware of this in early June and submitted photographic evidence that a variance was needed. Mr. Travis then informed Ms. Dorward that she needed a variance, and she completed an application toward the end of July. Neighbors were informed in early August. At that time, 12 neighbors responded, and their letters are included in the copy of the file that I received from the zoning office, and I assume you also have, and that includes one of the letters received today. Nine neighbors at that time objected to the variance and three supported it according to those files. So I guess there's an additional one in support now. However, the variance was granted at the end of September. We were informed October 10 and applied a week later to appeal before this board. Now we'd like to address our reasons for requesting that the relevant zoning code be upheld. We believe this case is a good example of why the ordinance was written in the first place. According to the notice we received from the zoning office, the first standard that needs to be satisfied in this case is that the variation will, quote, "not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining neighbors," unquote. The fence completely cuts off the view from our adjoining property and clearly undermines our property value. It effectively walls us in, whereas for decades we have enjoyed an expansive view of the beautiful neighborhood from our backyard, as well as from the back rooms of our home. Because our yard is half the length of other properties on Stewart, a high fence has a particularly egregious impact on our property value as it closes off the view from our garden and deprives us of the sense of spaciousness offered by virtually all other properties in this neighborhood. The previous fence was designed to seem like part of the scenery and allowed in plenty of light. The new one is fortress-like and allows for no visibility and no sunlight, so that our garden is much more shaded for much of the day. Given his age, our father spends considerable time sitting in his backyard when it's warm, and in his back sunroom virtually all times of the year. He used to sit and enjoy watching people and cars go by. Now he sees the fence. There are no similar structures in side yards in our neighborhood. A high and opaque fence running all the way to the sidewalk in the middle of the block is completely contrary to the character of this neighborhood. It compartmentalizes properties in an area where the seamlessness of greenery and agreeable communication between properties has otherwise been treasured. The decision rendered by the zoning office stated that because the fence runs parallel to our rear yard, it will not have an adverse impact on the character of the neighborhood. This is simply not the case. More importantly, the fact that this is our rear yard is not relevant to the public. The fence is visible to the public because it is in a side yard, and is objectionable to the public from that vantage point. The written decision also mentions that because the portion of fence is only 22 feet, it will not affect our enjoyment or property values. Again, we disagree. That is about half of our backyard and all that remains of our view since the garage was built. From the public's point of view, this 22-foot extension is objectionable because it goes from the front of a house to the sidewalk, which is what the main ordinance is written to prevent. Finally, in the files sent to us on this case by the zoning office, the nine nearby property owners who objected to a variance gave numerous reasons, including that the fence is out of character in this neighborhood, and that a variance would set an unwelcome precedent. In our neighborhood, fences of all kinds between adjoining properties are a rarity, even along the sides of people's backyards where they are perfectly legal.
The second standard which this fence must meet is that, quote, "The additional screening, additional height or requested location achieved through the variation will assist in reducing noise, screening incompatible adjacent uses, or increased safety of the subject property or abutting properties," unquote. The notice granting the variance repeats an assertion made by Ms. Dorward that the fence will assist in noise reduction off Stewart Avenue. This statement can only be called contrived. Ms. Dorward's front door faces Jenks and is more than 200 feet from Stewart. We live on Stewart Avenue. Stewart is a quiet side street. On the first Monday in December, we actually counted the number of cars traveling in either direction on Stewart. From 11:30 AM to noon, an average of one car every two minutes went by our house. From 5:00 to 5:30 PM, an average of two cars a minute went by. No garbage trucks stop on Stewart. They do stop on Jenks and in the alley right next to Ms. Dorward's house. Secondly, with regard to the standard, no assertion can possibly be made that a variance would screen incompatible adjacent uses. This fence bisects flower beds, about four feet deep on Ms. Dorward's side, and about 10 feet deep on ours. The adjacent uses are the same. Ms. Dorward has not claimed that the fence makes her property safer, but she did state in her letter, and the notice granting the variance repeats this, that the extra two feet somehow makes our property safer. This statement is also contrived. There are no safety issues between our properties. The fence runs down the middle of a shared flower bed. In the papers, we've seen no mention has ever been made of a safety issue that would require two additional feet of fence, as required by the standard. We are frankly at a loss to understand what advantage our neighbor thinks can be gained from the nonconformities requested. Our father has no pets and makes no noise. His yard is maintained by a professional landscape company. The fence does not even provide Ms. Dorward with any additional privacy. She has recently built a patio that is completely screened on all sides and is not adjacent to the portion of fence in question. The other side yard of her home borders just six feet from an alley, but for some reason she has seen no need to build a fence there.
Finally, we think it's important to mention that any practical difficulty or expense the owner might now face has been created by herself. She built the fence without applying for a permit. She tore down a fence and old growth eunomus on our property without informing us or our neighbors. On November 19, she moved the fences in both her backyard and side yards, again without notifying us, and leaving fence stumps and concrete behind. She did this because she discovered the fences had been built on other people's land. Our father has lived in this house for 58 years and has seen many neighbors and many structures come and go. In all other cases, misunderstanding was avoided through neighborly discussion long before any plans were finalized. We have pursued this appeal with no joy, but with more persistence than we ever thought would be necessary, because we are concerned about our father's property value and his quality of life, and because we think the case is clear and simple and represents an important precedent in the neighborhood. We hope you will agree, and thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Insert...I'm sorry, I was looking through a lot of your paperwork, so I may have missed your name, but if you could just give me your name really quickly?
Mark Seidel.
Mark Seidel?
Yes.
Did staff have anything that they wanted to add regarding the issuance of the...of the variance for the fence?
I think what's important to remember is that the only fence, portion of the fence that should be discussed is the first 22 linear feet. That once the fence is three feet past the front wall of the building, it is in compliance. And I believe that the question is, does this 22 linear feet out of 125 linear feet cause any harm or disvalue to the adjoining property values? And it was our opinion that it didn't.
At this time, before I completely open up, I'm going to ask Ms. Dorward if you had anything that you wished to add at this time. If you could please step forward, and thank you.
I don't know, is that a good height?
Yeah, it's...
Okay. I'm Tammy Dorward, and I am the resident of 2221 Jenks. I made the decision to replace the fence in my yard when I discovered it was being pulled out of its footings from the weight of the eunomus vine that had grown on top of it from the adjacent property. When I was considering the new fence, I wanted to recreate the property, the privacy that had existed between the two yards with the old four-foot fence and the foliage that topped it. I also wanted to ensure that as the vine grew again, it would not become too heavy for the fence to hold as it had previously. I made the decision to put up a six-foot red cedar board-on-board fence, feeling it was aesthetically in keeping with the neighborhood, and it has no bad side. Therefore, it would be visually appealing from both sides. People walking from the west or traveling in their cars have an unobstructed view of this fence from the sidewalk. As my initial appeal for the variance stated, between the old four-foot fence and the eunomus vine on top of it, in essence, there has been a six-foot barrier between these yards for years. I appreciate the new photographs that the Seidels have brought. However, they're a little bit older, they're from years past. I think that in my old file, you have some more recent photographs of what the fence and the vine actually looked like, which was pretty much a solid barrier once that vine had grown in. As Mr. Travis states, the fence is 125 linear feet in total, and I fear there would be a lack of visual continuity if the decision is made to require the 23 fence...23 feet of the fence to be a four-foot open picket fence with the remaining 80% at six feet. This would actually be most offensive to the adjacent property as it becomes their backyard fence, so they would have a fence at six feet, and then it would lower to four feet. The fences do provide privacy, and there is not necessarily recently, but there have been in past, as I understand, some security issues from people traveling between the two yards. Mr. Seidel actually had told me at one point that there used to be an archway between the two yards, and they ended up having to close that off because people traveled between the two yards going through the backyards. I also believe, and again, it's just my belief, but that the Stewart Street property is a corner lot, and if they wanted to put up a fence in their backyard, they would not be able to run at the full width of their property without requesting a variance due to setback regulations. So if that's true, then this fence additionally does benefit the property and the value to that. But again, that's just my opinion. That's really all I have to say, as I think the variance had it all. There was one additional photo that we did add to your packet since the variance was approved earlier this year, and that does show the old shed from my property, and it shows the overgrowth of the eunomus vine. So just to note that that's an additional addition.
Is it this picture?
Yes. No, that's the original one. It's got a picture of the...
Turn around. Is it this one? This one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so the portion of the fence in question is to the left of the shed, whereas from the other photographs that were in the packet, they are taken from the sidewalk.
So the left of the photograph is your side yard and the...and right straight in front of us in the photograph is your rear yard fence?
Yes.
At the time?
Yes, this is when the shed was up and before the garage went up.
Are there any questions for Ms. Dorward at this time?
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to speak to us regarding the case of 2221 Jenks? Please, sir, if you could step up and give us your name and address.
My name is Steve Carlson. My wife and I reside on the property immediately to the north of both the Seidels and Ms. Dorward. We've lived there since 1987. Mr. Dor...Ms. Dorward initiated this by replacing a fence that had a portion nonconforming and made it worse, and did so without a permit. And in my opinion, the zoning department mishandled the process several times along the way, including granting her relief. With regard to the reasoning of the zoning officer and the written decision on the case, I disagree with most of his points. I disagree with the statement in the initial paragraph and repeated in... and repeated in the, as the reason it passed the first standard, which quote said that because the front yard borders the rear yard of the Seidels, it will not have an adverse impact on the physical character of the area. The critical point is that it is the first time in our area that a six-foot fence to extend from the front of someone's house to the sidewalk has been permitted. This was a key complaint and concern of most of the nine letters against granting the relief. Allowing this increases the probability that others in the area will ask for and then use this to get relief. It's, and, and, and in the long term, it will have a significant, in my opinion, on the physical character of the, of the area. And the comment that was just made about the 120 feet of fence, we're really only talking about the 50 feet of fence that is, that goes along the back of, of the side, between the, of the Seidels and Ms. Dorwood. The rest of the fence is along my side yard. With, regarding the second standard, in my opinion, the noisy, noise, safety and screening incompatible use reasons are just smoke and mirrors. Stewart Avenue is a residential street just like Brery and Jenks. We hear more noise from the alley than Stewart, and Ms. Dorwood lives within six feet of the alley, and we're 100 feet of the alley, and she's at least 170 feet from Stewart. And as far as safety, both yards are wide open to the street. Neither one of them has ever been, had an enclosed yard. And, and finally, there's no clarification whatsoever as to what incompatible uses are being screened by such a fence. According to Mr. Travis, when my wife and I met him, he said he had only two choices. Require her to put the 21 feet of the fence closest between the sidewalk and the front of the house back or grant the variance. He said requiring the old fence to be turned would look terrible. He never mentioned that Ms. Dorwood's actions, including put up, putting up the fence without a permit, had brought about the issue. And it seems to me that the, the more reasonable thing to do is to require Ms. Dorwood to lower the height to four feet for the, along the 21 feet. I've seen that in other places in Evanston where that's been done, and I don't think it would look all that terrible that way. And that would stop it from being more non-conforming than it already was. And that goes back to that, the statement of a non-conforming fence. It says, "Any repair or replacement of a legal non-conforming fence shall neither increase the degree or, or not of the non-conforming nor create any new compliance that did not exist prior to April 1st, 1999."
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to us regarding the matter of 2221 Jenks? Are there any questions from the board for anyone who's spoken at this point? Okay, Ms. Seidel, we'll give you the opportunity to close if you had any comments.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any formal comments. I would just like to thank the Carlsons for clarifying that we're not talking about 125 feet of fence in total. We're talking about 50, and this is approximately half of it. And we recognize that we're talking about bisecting the back of our property, which it has been done by other people in the past. Initially, there was only a fence extending half across the property. One of our neighbors put that up, and then subsequently, we decided with, with later, with later neighbors that we would together pay to have the fence extended. So we were part of the initial non-compliance some time ago, purely for aesthetic reasons. But we made a great effort at that time to maintain the green atmosphere in the neighborhood. And Ms. Dorwood is right that at one time there was a rose arbor between our two properties, and my father is very nostalgic about those days. The rose arbor and that passage that you see in the first picture had to go because children were cutting across our properties. That was not what you call a safety issue. We just didn't want children running across our mutual backyards. So we put up together what we thought was the minimum barrier. The eunomus does not have to be as high as you see in this picture, but Ms. Dorwood has never properly maintained it. And we share our eunomus border also with the Carlsons, and together we have maintained it at approximately four feet over time. We cannot go onto her property to trim it. On the other hand, I know that she has never liked it. So when, when she first moved in, she came over once and said that she had wanted to remove it, but she discovered it was on our property. And we said at the time, yes, our mother had planted it. She was very fond of it. It had taken a long time to grow, and that was the end of the discussion. So we were particularly surprised that she would knock it down and now say that she liked it. If she could have maintained the fence, the, the few posts that started to lean would not have leaned, and certainly could have been repaired. I think that's all that I have to say, except that we, we do feel that this is a simple case of following the code, and we never expected it to become so complicated. And our neighbors, most of our neighbors never expected it either, and we hope this can be resolved. Thank you.
If I could ask you really quickly, I know you're sort of speaking for your father, but given the fact that the fence is gone and there's nobody, nothing that anybody here can do about that, the, the non-variance replacement of a fence like that is more, is more or less exactly the, the same thing?
Right.
With a little bit of leeway in terms of the, how solid the fence is?
Right.
What is your opinion of a shorter fence of similar construction to the fence that's out there right now?
Well, I think you can see that what we put up was very open, and that was, that was our intent and of, of minimal height. And we covered it with greenery because we didn't like the, the look of the fence in any case. We basically didn't, never wanted a fence. So it's hard for me to answer that question. I mean, I guess it's, you know, can we go back in time? Well, we, we think that the whole reason for permits and applying for them beforehand is so that you don't have to go back in time. So I'm not really sure how to answer that. It's not like, you know, we want to be bad neighbors. We've always cooperated with neighbors before. We've never had a problem like this before. It's, it's a tremendous headache to have a conflict at this time when we, when we depend on neighbors so much for their support of our father. And, and we're very appreciative of that in this neighborhood. So we don't want to make trouble, but at the same time, I don't really know how to answer your question.
Okay. Thanks. All right. Is that it?
I actually have one question. I don't know who is best to answer this. But it's hard to tell from the picture. Does the front of the house line up with the front of the garage? Or how, what is the approximate? Is it close? Is it five feet? Is it? Could you come to a microphone just so?
Matt, if you look at the Plata survey, it shows the garage and its relationship to
I tried to find that. I couldn't find it in my
Do you want me to pass it down?
Actually, Lori has it here.
Yeah, so based on that, it seems like it's, the, the face of the garage is about six and a half feet-ish back behind the face of the house.
All right.
And the requirement, the requirement, Martin, is that it can be six feet up to three feet behind the face or three feet in front of the face?
Three feet behind the front wall of the principal building.
So basically, you're kind of splitting the difference between the garage and the face of the house.
Almost, almost at the face of this one-story addition piece on the on the side here. Just a little bit in front of the garage.
So it's 19.9 from the front property line to the front face of the house plus three feet. Would be about 22 feet, which is right in that, that niche, which would be about, there's no dimension from the front lot line to the garage. Well, I can just do the math the opposite way. 3.4 and 20 is 23 and a half from 50, so it's roughly, yeah, 27 point something feet. So the difference is, yeah, rough, about five feet. Very good.
Any other questions, sir? For anyone else? Okay. With that, we will close the record and begin our deliberation. I know you guys have thoughts.
Are we, are we reviewing this relative to our, our typical standards for a variance?
Well, relative to this, relative to the standards for the variance for a fence, which are outlined?
Yeah, where are those?
And if you go, actually, if you go to page two of your memorandum, which might be the fastest thing to find? Or not? Yeah, actually, look at, right, right in front of your hand. Oh, you just put it down. There was this sheet. You just had it in the top. No, you just had this in the top of your hand a second ago. Yeah. Those are the standards for fence variation. So they're a little bit
Okay.
A little bit different than our, our baseline standards.
Okay. Then, yeah, I'm happy to start. I guess my sense is, just in looking at the updated site plan, with a garage being right next to that fence line and a driveway, what you're doing is really screening that driveway. And so my concern, by having that much screening adjacent to a car that's moving and kids walking on a sidewalk, is that that creates a very unsafe environment, which I think is generally why we say no, no fences in a front side yard, so that when there is a driveway, you have safety of passage for pedestrians. So that's, that's my initial thought and concern about having that six-foot-high fence. I think that I could be persuaded to overlook the opacity issue in favor of a height, of a reduction in height. So a reduction in height to four feet so that you can see a car moving and that you can see people moving on the street and the sidewalk would mitigate the opacity issue and maybe salvageable somehow of that fence that's already half-installed.
I generally agree as well. Also looking, you know, from, particularly to me, looking from the Jenks Street, you know, view, if I'm headed, it's a little bit crooked, but if I'm headed sort of southwest, I guess, that's, those are front yards. And it's certainly our intention and our practice to not be obstructing front yards with that, with that height. So I think I would just kind of add that to, to my concern in terms of the effect on the appearance and, and view of the whole neighborhood as well. I would also just add that I'm, in terms of standard number two, I don't necessarily, I don't, I don't see that we're, I don't see that we're protecting anyone from anything and creating the variance.
Yeah, I don't see that either. I'm not sure we're increasing the safety of any owner. In fact, we're making it less safe for pedestrians.
I agree.
Matt, did you have anything to say before we go to a motion?
No, I just, I would second what Mary Beth has raised, the issue about a driveway that close to a fence of that height. I mean, if you look at standard number three, I mean, it specifically addresses, you know, corner curbs and intersections specifically for that purpose. And I realize that this is not an intersection, but it is a moving car nonetheless. And in regard to having a, a two-height fence, that was specifically why I was questioning where the garage was and everything else, because to me, that seems a perfectly logical place to break the height of that since the garage is, in effect, acting as a screening device anyway on the property line or close to the property line.
Okay, so just to run through standards really quickly. First, standard number one, we believe is not met due to the safety of the sidewalk and interaction with the adjacent driveway, as well as the effect on the views and general character of the neighborhood along the front yards at Jenks. And standard number two is also not met due to the fact that there does not seem to be creating any additional assistance in reducing noise or incompatible uses, et cetera. And standard number three is not applicable.
So just to be, so just to be clear, what exactly are we doing here?
This is an appeal of a decision of the zoning administrator. So a motion
Do we want to touch on the opacity of the lower fence?
Yes, we do. Well, yes, we need to touch on the opacity of the lower fence. If we are to overturn the decision of the zoning administrator, which it sounds like we are doing based on these standards, we, we can either simply overturn it, which allows a fence of the same opacity and height to be put back, and/or we may modify the approval to allow it to only be, say, a four-foot fence, but allow it to be, maintain the opacity of the, of the new fence if so desired.
I, I guess that's my, that's my inclination again for two reasons. One is that, although I'm normally not this sympathetic, once the fence is installed, it's easiest to just cut it down.
Yeah, I did note that there, from the pictures, that there is a horizontal support board about halfway down the fence. So I'm guessing that if you chopped off the vertical boards right at the top of that So I'm guessing that if you chopped off the vertical boards right at the top of that and put a cap on it, you would meet the four-foot limit and not be reconstructing anything.
Right. And additionally, from a visual standpoint, it's going to look better for it to be a consistent style of fence.
So, considering sort of the situation of all parties, that would also be my recommendation. Does anyone want to put forward a motion to such?
I would move in the matter eleven ZM, ZMNV zero zero five eight regarding twenty-two twenty-one Jenks Street, that we uphold the appeal overturning the decision of the zoning administrator and permit a fence not exceeding four feet in height, but up to and including a hundred percent opacity to stand in the roughly twenty-two feet, which we have been discussing.
Second.
It's been moved and second. All those who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. The motion is carried by all four members, so that will be our decision. And if there are any questions regarding further, further action, those can be addressed to staff during the normal business workday. And we will let people head out if they want to, and we can move on to our next case, which is going to be sixteen twenty-nine Orington Avenue. And... Just give it a second, and then we'll, we'll read that into the record.
Melissa, just a quick question. In the packet of emails you gave us, there was one that regarded eighteen oh three Grant, right? As well as the stuff for twenty-two twenty-one Jenks?
There were three that referred to Grant.
Yeah, I believe two were for Jenks and three were for Grant.
Okay.
And our next case is sixteen twenty-nine Orington Avenue.
Stephen Geller, L C, from LR sixteen oh three Orington LLC, for a special use permit at sixteen twenty-nine Orington Avenue to operate a daycare center child. Sixteen twenty-nine Orington Avenue is located in the D three downtown core zoning district, which requires a special use permit for any daycare center child to operate. The zoning board of appeals makes a recommendation to the city council, the final determining body for this case. Included in the ZBA packet is the special use application submitted October twenty-fifth, two thousand and eleven, the standards form, zoning analysis, City of Evanston Public Works Department memo, Bright Horizons transportation assessment, letter of concern from adjacent property owner, spark meeting minutes from November ninth, two thousand and eleven, spark meeting minutes from November thirtieth, two thousand and eleven, Bright Horizons ZBA presentation materials and concept drawings, along with an additional presentation page that was handed out at the beginning of the meeting. Staff helping to present the materials tonight will be Craig Sklenar.
Good evening. Craig Sklenar, general planner with the City of Evanston. I would also like at this time to enter into the record two letters of support from employers. One is from the North Shore University Health System that operates Evanston Hospital. And the second is from Northwestern University as well, describing their interaction with Bright Horizons. I only have two original copies that were just submitted to me, so I'm going to present them to you, and we would need them back for the record.
Okay, because we're getting these here, we're going to go with applicants A and B on these.
Okay. The property located at sixteen twenty-nine Orington consists of approximately thirty, thirty thousand square feet of retail space. It has been empty for almost ten years now. It formerly was a Borders, and then before that was a Walgreens, operating as a drugstore. Bright Horizons has applied to use twenty-five thousand one hundred and sixty-seven square feet of the property that would help facilitate childcare services for three hundred and eight children, employ fifty-two staff members and teachers. They currently operate a daycare, daycare center for Evanston Hospital at one thousand Central Street, caring for eighty-four children at that facility. They have two hundred people on their waitlist for childcare services. They also are working with Northwestern University and have secured a, a number of spaces for their faculty and staff to care for their children during the day. This property is located in a D three downtown core development district, and like I have said, this property's been vacant for quite some time. I'm going to introduce now Debbie Brown. She's the vice president of regional development for Bright Horizons, and she will introduce her staff as well throughout the presentation.
Thank you, Craig, for introducing me.
I, I apologize really quickly. I forgot. I got distracted by Mr. Sklenar. I do need to swear your whole hand. So if you, if you wish to speak to us regarding this case this evening for sixteen twenty-nine Orington, if you could raise your right hand. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Please, go ahead. Sorry about that.
Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening to present to you a little bit about the project that we envision at sixteen twenty-nine Orington. With me today are, is Steve Geller, one of the project, director of design and pre-construction persons that are working with me on the project. As well, our project manager, Bob Ewald, and our regional director with me is Dawn Ellis. We have been working on this project for well over a year, and I am going to just give you a little bit of background on the project and what we envisioned for the project this evening. The representative for the owner, Pat, was going to be with us tonight. She is home ill with the flu. As Craig outlined, a brief overview of the project that we have conceived at the site. The project will accommodate, as Craig has explained, three hundred and eight children. Primarily, we increased the capacity of the center to accommodate a larger number of infant and toddler-aged children, because that seems to be the area where there is the least amount of supply in the community and the deepest of waitlists. We will be offering full and part-time schedules, given we have heard from both the hospital and the university that that also is an area of need. And we will operate Monday through Fridays from seven AM until six-thirty PM. I have included here a ground floor site plan for you, giving you an overview of the project. The sixteen twenty-nine building is shown in the yellow. In the green is the infant and toddler play area that will be constructed on the mezzanine area, and there is an existing parking lot that is accessible from both Davis and Church via the alley, which is a two-way alley. The families will actually have access to those spaces for drop-off and pickup of children. I'll explain to that, or I'll speak to that in just a moment. On the next slide, I've also included a site plan of the rooftop area, because we do intend to develop an additional play area on the rooftop for the preschool-aged children. The preschool children will occupy the second floor, as will there be some support spaces for indoor activities and such, and is also a kitchen and some of the staff support spaces. We will be constructing the playground in and around some of the existing HVAC units and such, and actually improving the aesthetics of the rooftop area. This is a conceptual rendering, intended to give you a perspective of what the project might look like once the rooftop play area is installed as well. You can see the proximity of the toddler play area is intended, so children can go in and out of the childcare center safe without being exposed to any cars or anything like that. As well, parents will have easy access via the parking that is shown there. We do intend to include some kite structures and such around the safety barrier on the rooftop to provide more shade and protection from the wind. So that's a snapshot of the project. We were very pleased after conducting the site search for downtown Evanston area where to locate the childcare center, to have found this location, as it did meet all of our operating requirements. We've then turned our attention to those special use criteria that are outlined for approval, and we are here tonight seeking your approval of such. The, the nine criteria that are outlined here, we do believe we have full compliance, and I'm going to, in the next couple of slides, touch on that. Criteria A suggests that we confirm that, yes, in fact, childcare is an allowed, allowed use, and yes, in fact, it is. Daycare centers are allowed. They are listed as a special use allowance in the district, and in fact, the district does encourage that there be office, retail, and residential uses, and we not only feel it's compatible, but we also think that it will be beneficial to the other uses there as well. Criteria B is a bit more complex and involved, as it references the comprehensive general plan, which is a pretty extensive document. I tried to get through it, and I, I have to say, I fell asleep on two different occasions reading it, not because it's not interesting, but it goes into depth. That was way beyond my scope. We do feel that there's probably a couple of places within each of the chapters where we think that the comprehensive plan definitely does seem to support and actually speak to issues concerning childcare. Under land use, there was definitely language that talks about promoting the growth, retention, expansion, and attraction of employers and businesses to the area, and certainly having an adequate supply of childcare is important to do that for any city, for any city, Evanston included. Certainly, access to childcare is important to young families with children that are looking to make either living decisions where they reside and/or work decisions. And currently, that seems to, to be one of the things that's missing in Evanston. We also know that childcare is becoming increasingly employer, important to employers, institutions that really are competing for employees. And we do believe that with the support of the university and the hospital, the childcare center makes a lot of sense. This project will, as Craig has referenced, will be, include the modernization of sixteen twenty-nine. Our plans call for almost a five-million-dollar renovation of that space that has been dark for a very long time. That will enable us to create a childcare center that will actually support fifty-eight total staff positions, including the admin, and quite a few construction jobs would obviously be included during the construction phase. And all of that would seem to be related to some of the public facilities language that was included in the general, in the comprehensive general plan. On this next page, there were two other references, circulation and community environment. And again, we found reference in both of those chapters that we believe does seem to support approval of our special use application. The link between neighborhoods and the community, childcare certainly seems to be one of those important links in how people think about where they live and work. And in many cases, we know from having run childcare centers and having done numerous studies about how families choose what childcare choices they make, that having access to childcare can, in fact, sometimes encourage public use of, I'm sorry, use of public transportation. And it also can, in many cases, shorten trips that are already happening and/or reduce trips entirely. Families that will use the childcare center are most likely already traveling to and from their place of work, and this would just be a stop along the way. We also know that staff people will be incented to use public transportation, so we will be offering a program called Wage Works that does offer the incentive to do that, but we also will give you information and about some of the parking we will provide for staff as well. Certainly, having this vacant building improved is going to be, I think, very welcome for all of downtown Evanston retailers and such in and around. It's going to not only be aesthetically improving, but it is also going to bring quite a lot of new traffic to that particular area, and it could actually help to incite some new interest in businesses along that, that particular block. We are, by locating the playground on the rooftop, we are taking steps, pretty expensive, I might add, to preserve the open space by, but also the landscaping and such in and around that area, not giving up the planter box and some of those things that are there now. And we are going to include in our design the expectation that we will incorporate a lot of sustainable building materials, because we think it's the right thing to do, and because we think it's good for children, but also we are committed to meeting and/or exceeding the city's Evanston, City of Evanston's green initiative program. Criteria C, as we look at it, was also a pretty easy one to check off the list, because it seems it's pretty accepted. There is quite an inadequate supply of childcare in the particular area now. There are a number of childcare providers that exist in the greater Evanston area, surrounding communities, as there are in most communities around the area, but inevitably, the waitlists are long. We made inquiries of quite a few centers here in November and found the majority of them are full with waitlists, similar to ourselves, and we also wanted to give you a snapshot of the demand at the hospital center where we have the, the most information. And so we've included a chart there that also shows the demand across the age groups. The demand is not unique to any one program. It seems like it is consistent across all the programs. And certainly, as the institutions of, the institution here, the, the university as well, employers continue to grow. The demand for childcare is only going to get bigger, and we believe that this shortage of childcare will not easily be solved if special use permits are denied for childcare. There are numerous reasons why childcare shortages exist, not only in Evanston, but across the country. That is because it is very expensive to develop childcare centers, especially when we try to locate them in close proximity to where young families live and work. The facility requirements for childcare are extensive, and they're getting more stringent all the time for good reason. One, primarily to make children, to assure that children are kept safe, but also to make childcare centers adaptive to the needs of children. Startup costs are also very high for childcare, because oftentimes, you have to not only be prepared to fund the construction and development costs, but you have to be prepared then to sustain operations for sometimes two and three years while the center builds enrollment. Childcare typically is a low-margin business, and because of that, many childcare providers find it difficult to expand. Even some of the very best programs have a very hard time coming up with the funds to do so. And some of the very best programs also find it hard to scale, even when they can find the money to do so. So we believe that adding to the current supply, the opportunity that's being extended to the city at this moment, you should take it, take us up on it. Criteria D was intended to really speak to the issue of the value of, of properties and such in the neighborhood. And we believe that our improvement of the Orington site certainly is going to be an improvement, certainly. is going to be an improvement, certainly an aesthetic one, but we also think one for the economic situation in that particular area and the city of Evanston. The space will be certainly improved, and there will be expanded foot traffic and stuff that is going to come to the site as families do include a stop at 1629 Orienton to and from their work. We also believe that there could be new employers and businesses that are attracted to Evanston as a place to locate when there is an adequate supply of childcare in addition to some of the other amenities and such that are here. And certainly, as Evanston continues to grow and economics start to come back again, childcare will be one of the considerations for many young families with children and those families that are being recruited to work here by employers and institutions. Criteria E is that about access to public facilities. This is a very downtown location. All the services that are needed are obviously in close proximity to us. We've spoken already about the frequency of access to retailers, banks, restaurants, that all will benefit from having families there early in the day and end of day, and we also expect that having children visible in the downtown area and such will be welcome to many of the businesses and such that are there. Traffic is always a concern for all downtown areas, and it is certainly one that we took very seriously. We did basically do a traffic study that was based on a center of a similar size that we currently do operate, and tried to do our very best to assure that this site was going to have adequate parking and such so as to avoid the traffic congestion that would be concerns. The site, one of the things we liked about this site, obviously, is that it is accessible from quite a few different vantage points, one being the alley from between church and Davis, also the fact that there is an underground parking garage under the building. There is a surface lot directly outside of the entrance, and we expect that there will be some families that will be using public transportation as well. We have as part of our arrangement with the landlord arranged to have 20 stalls provided specifically for the use of the childcare center. 14 of those spaces are going to be in the entrance, I'm sorry, in the lot adjacent to our entrance, and currently six will be available in the parking garage if we find that more families are going to be using the parking garage. There is the ability to expand in the parking garage as well. We have worked with the landlord, so where we will have reserved parking at those 14 surface stalls so that parents can be assured that during the peak hours when they would be dropping off and picking up children, that those stalls would be available to them. And we will also have these stalls be posted with 20-minute restrictions so that we can expedite turns and avoid abuse by families. We don't want families using that, those parking stalls for anything other than drop-off and pickup. However, then during the off periods and weekends and evenings, those parking stalls will be available to the general public. As I mentioned previously, we will have 26 stalls reserved for staff, but we will incent staff to, through our Wage Works program, to use public transportation. And certainly, our intent is to encourage even more families to use public transportation. In our other downtown centers, we found that by providing storage at the childcare center for baby baskets and strollers actually enables families to do that, and that will be the case here. Criteria G, H, and I seem to be pretty straightforward. It's not been referenced that this has any historical value, and we're not really doing anything architecturally to the exterior facade of the building. We are actually developing a childcare playground on the rooftop and taking all of city staff's direction and such as to how to do that. The significant natural and environmental resources will be maintained. Obviously, the landscaping and such that is there will be untouched. We will be adding planter boxes at both the ground-level playground and the rooftop playground to add greenery and also provide some additional screening. And to the best of our knowledge, the project is in complete compliance and we would hope would be granted approval. In summary, we certainly believe that the community will benefit by an expanded supply of childcare. There's a lot of good quality childcare in the city of Evanston. It's just not enough, especially with the growth that's predicted amongst the institution and major employers of the community. And it is also expected that as new businesses are recruited to come and make their home in Evanston, childcare will be essential to them as well. We do believe the project is aligned with some of the goals and objectives in the Comprehensive General Plan. We believe our project will add important jobs, not only in the short term, but in the long term, and it will help local businesses attract and retain employees. And we ourselves have a reputation for being good corporate citizens, and we will add to the economic and civic fabric of the community of Evanston. Please give our project consideration. We thank you very much for your attention.
Ms. Brown, a few questions. I'm just trying to piece things together in terms of the site plan, because I know you're trying to show a lot of stuff on here. In terms of deliveries that you might get, I presume that you are in need of supplies since you're feeding kids and taking care of them for quite a bit of time, and I know that that takes a lot of stuff. So is that in the, is that through the parking lot? I see there's kind of, looks like there's a drop-off area in the back off the alley, and I'm not quite sure what I'm looking at there.
Get you back there. So you will notice where it says the Two's Playground, this is obviously, actually, I should go back one more, I apologize. There you go. Where it says Infant Toddler Support, directly to the top of that area, if you will, the boxes between the two words alley, that is the loading dock, and there is an elevator directly in that corner up there is a service elevator. So all the deliveries will be made to that and then taken up the elevator to the building.
Okay.
And that is existing now and will not be, that's not part of our scope.
Okay. And that, so that's not on the same level as your entry then?
Yes, it is on the same level, but it will service the second floor from that elevator.
Oh, the second floor as well, okay.
So we'll have access to both the first floor and the second floor.
And what, and in what capacity do you receive deliveries?
Obviously, we will have food service delivered usually twice a week, majority of that being milk and food products, and then we do have art supplies, things like that, delivered monthly and quarterly.
And do you know approximately, like, approximately the size of those vehicles? Are they smaller box trucks and/or vans, or are there larger, sort of 18-wheeler type of deliveries?
It's usually not 18-wheelers because most of what we're bringing in does have to be fairly fresh. We tend to get smaller deliveries during the week. When we order supplies and stuff, it's usually paints and papers and things that come in fairly small boxes, so it's not like it's pallets of things by any means.
Okay. And the other spaces that are in the surface parking lot are already dedicated to other users in the building or the adjacent building?
They are not dedicated. It's actually a public lot, and so anybody can park there, anybody that wants to. At this particular time, there's a gate, and you just take a ticket and go in, and you pay to park depending on how long that you're there.
So. It's a public parking lot owned by, not the City of Evanston, though.
That is correct. It is owned by the, by the 1629 landlord.
Owned by the.
And so there are spaces shown that would be exclusive to the childcare, only during those peak hours.
Okay.
Anybody can park there any other time. And the landlord primarily plans to have in the front where it says Retail A and Retail B, that those will be retailers. They wanted to maintain the front of the building there for them to lease to other retailers, so it was important to them that they continue to have some of that parking available to those retailers at all hours.
Okay, so I see the times on your sample sign. So this sign would be at each of those spaces.
Yes.
So at other times, other people could park in those spaces.
Correct.
And then how, I guess similarly, I was going to ask you about the garage, but I guess similarly here, if it's not, if it is also a gated parking lot, what is the scenario in terms of a parent who is trying to use the garage or trying to use the gated parking lot to drop somebody off? They're not clearly paying, I presume.
They will be given a card key.
Okay.
That will give them 20-minute access to the parking lot before they will be charged. So right now, if you go in, you push a button, you get a ticket. When you come out, you put in a credit card. The parents will go in, they will push a button, and it'll get a ticket, but when they come out, they'll put in a key card, and if it's been less than 20 minutes, it will be free.
Okay, and that is the same system that would work for the garage for them too?
The garage is actually, there is an administrator within the garage that actually does all of that. It doesn't have the same gate system. There's a parking attendant.
Oh, there's an attendant, so they would have some sort of pass for that as well?
Correct.
And just kind of looking at the surrounding area really quickly, obviously, the bank building is kind of a good distance away because it's across that, across that parking lot in Plaza area.
The bank building is where the word chase is, so it's across, completely across the parking lot. Then there's a sidewalk.
Right.
That children can, if you were parking in the stalls 14 through 10, children would actually get out on the front of the car, and they would come down, and then they would walk across where there is a red stripe to the entrance, which is marked by the red arrow.
And then the, and then the building adjacent to you, to actually your north or the left side of the drawing, appears to have a fairly solid exterior wall there in such a manner that the, there aren't, there aren't windows immediately adjacent to where you would be putting your place enter. Do I understand that correctly?
That is correct.
Okay.
And this, the parking stalls along, again, the same side where there's 14 to 10, people could park there and easily access the bank and such. That's just, they just go up the stair and into the bank lobby from that same side.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Brown at this time? Okay. Did you, did you have anyone else who was going to be presenting at this point?
No.
Okay.
They're here to ask, answer questions if needed.
Okay, great. Thank you very much then.
Yeah.
And is there anyone else who would wish to speak to us regarding Orienton at this point? If you could come up one at a time, please, and state your name and address for the record.
Did you swear them in?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Cass Wolfe. I live at 325 Dewey in Evanston. I am also the Executive Director of Infant Welfare Society of Evanston, which is a 98-year-old organization that has been providing early childhood childcare since 1970. I am here tonight specifically, well, with the support with, in conversation with other early childhood programs in Evanston, largely the nonprofit early childhood programs that I'm in contact with very often, and I would like to specifically address special use compliance, Criteria C that was referenced in the slideshow here to talk about capacity. And I'm understanding that probably that the Bright Horizons staff was not, is not familiar with the report. I brought a few copies of, just two pages of it. I think there's one for Bright Horizons as well. This report is by a group called IFF. Used to stand for Illinois Facilities Fund, but now they work in other states, so they just go by IFF. Did a study on capacity in states and, excuse me, in Illinois, counties and municipalities as well as the city of Chicago. The second page that's attached, it's tiny, but that wasn't my doing, sorry. I did put a star by the row that has Evanston. This is capacity for zero to five in the community. There is a separate page, which I didn't have the ability to copy for you tonight for zero to three, excuse me, zero through two, and another for three to five, sums up together on this page by and large. There is a shortage of space for zero to two, so the infants and toddlers. If you were to look at that page alone, and you do have their website, so you can go there and find it, or I can give it to staff if necessary. The report says there are, is a shortage of 594 infant and toddler spaces. We are among those organizations that, we largely serve infants and toddlers, and we do have a waiting list as well. But there's actually an oversupply of three- to five-year-old spots. It's 116, according to the report, for the community of Evanston, and I know that anecdotally by talking to my colleagues in programs who are not filling their spaces. So it's a little confusing to me to hear that there is in fact a shortage of space for three- to five-year-olds because this report says 116. Anecdotally, that's what my experience is, and I'm concerned about adding another 140 three- to five-year-old spots on top of the vacant.
Your concern with full-time daycare?
Yes, yeah. Some of them are used part-time as well, but this report is basically focused on full-time care.
I'm going to just really quickly, the few pages of this report that you've given us, we're going to call this El Palanc one and enter this into the record.
Okay.
Can I ask you a quick question before you move on from this?
Yes.
Which is, how do you reconcile that with the statistics from, what's the name of the company?
Bright Horizons.
Bright Horizons. And the North Shore University Healthcare Systems facility at 1000 Central, where they've got a waiting list of 87.
Right.
To me, that says.
I'd be happy to explain.
To me, that says that they don't, those, those consumers don't necessarily want to put their kids in other daycare situations, but I'd be happy to hear your.
Sure. Couple things. First of all, the slide that was given included two centers that aren't even in Evanston.
Oh, did you not get one?
The, creme de la creme and the Knowledge Beginnings are not Evanston centers.
Right.
So, so that's one thing. Another is that waiting lists are slippery things because most parents need care yesterday, not, you know, six weeks from now or six months from now. So they put their name on every waiting list because they have to. And I've talked to many of those centers too, and there are definitely people, I mean, people waiting for spots, especially again for infants and toddlers. But we know of, I know of three programs in Evanston where they are converting three-year-old spaces into two-year-old spaces.
Which facilities are those?
Evanston Day Nursery.
Where's that located?
On Grant, at about Asbury, I think.
Dodge.
Dodge, Dodge, Grant and Dodge. Reba Early Learning, which is on Custer and.
Right off.
Right off, okay. Southeast Evanston. They are about to add a two-year-old room, and the third one is the Childcare Center of Evanston up here on Asbury.
What is the downside, in your opinion, of having too much capacity for childcare?
Some programs will probably end up closing because as Bright Horizons does point out, it's costly to run an early childhood program, and if you don't have the income, you cannot maintain the level of staffing. So one of the concerns of the community is that some of the long-term smaller programs, because most can't and don't operate at, you know, capacity of a couple hundred, will be forced to shut down. And then while they are employing staff now, and Bright Horizons is in fact going to add staff, will it end up being a net-net? will it end up being a net-net? So, that's my concern. I'm not opposed to Bright Horizons coming to town. I simply am, you know, wanting some information for the record that there isn't as much a need for it, especially in the three- to five-year-old, as the information they, they were working with would indicate. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Martha Aronson, and I live at 1023 Simpson Street here in Evanston. And I'm the Executive Director of Childcare Network of Evanston. And we go by CNE. And CNE has supported early childhood programming in the community for over 40 years. And I'm, again, speaking on behalf of families that would be accessing high-quality care and early education, as well as the nonprofit organizations that my colleague Cass spoke about. What I wanted to share with you is that longtime Evanston centers are run by people who know and care about the community, and they may be forced out of business. And that does reduce the employee and the populations. And then, these are also centers, these same nonprofit centers, that reserve spaces for Evanston's low-income families who receive subsidies from the state of Illinois. And if they're forced to close, where would those families who access state subsidies go for high-quality childcare? And what we don't know is how many subsidized slots would Bright Horizons commit to for their center, so that our goal for high-quality early care and education is access for all families. And so, we have a concern that if nonprofit organizations that are committed to serving low-income families and have their programs with, also with full-fee families, that helps to offset the cost, plus the, the major fundraising that we all have to do as nonprofits. What would happen to those families where there would be a diverse population in a center, which also contributes to the high quality of programming? What I wanted to say is that 10 years ago, the IFF did a study of capacity, and Evanston was one of those communities that was cited as having strong needs for high-quality care and education, as well as adding more. And in the 10 years, we have really worked hard, and I wanted to bring that perspective to the committee to meet those community needs. So, one example is that Early Head Start began in Evanston, serving low-income, the neediest low-income families. It started in about 1999 to 2000. And it started with 40 families. And Childcare Network has been part of that collaboration of services. And this year, in 2009, we were able to expand the Early Head Start to serve over 120 families in Evanston and surrounding communities. But those are strictly Evanston childcare programs. The other thing that the, the community has responded to, as Cass mentioned, was the converting of three- to five-year-old classes, because there's not as great a need, to two-year-old classes, where there is a need. In a similar way, I know of at least two other centers who were considering investing in capital efforts to expand their programs to include more infants and toddlers. And what we found is that with Bright Horizons coming in on such a large level, these programs are now on hold, because it doesn't make sense to, it doesn't really make good business sense, probably, to compete with the, a large corporation when these are locally-run nonprofit organizations. And then, finally, I just wanted to say that nonprofits do not have slim operating margins. They're committed to serving families of all economic levels, and so, they really work hard to even bring in income to support the high cost, cost of quality early care and education. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who wished to speak with us regarding this case for Orington? Seeing none, Ms. Brown, did you have anything else you wanted to say in response or in summation?
Yes, I did want to respond on a couple of things and address some of the points that were raised. First of all, I would like to have the Zoning Board of Appeals understand a little bit about childcare operations. If we were to open a childcare center in downtown Evanston for approximately 100 infant and toddlers, the children would come into the center as infants. They would settle in nicely, and they would be there about a year. And about a year after they're there, they're now two. And given the waitlist situations and such, they would have to immediately start to think about where their children are going if they were to leave a center. You cannot create more demand by just opening an infant and toddler center, because you just then dump all of those children into the system and have this pipeline problem at that time. We have tried this in other markets, where there was this infant-toddler demand that was the only demand looking to be solved. Parents are not looking to have children start in a program, develop friendships, bond with teachers at age three, be uprooted, and start in new programs at that particular time. So, we have an aversion to doing just infant-toddler programs. We scaled this program specifically to have the larger capacity of infants and toddlers. We know that, like other providers, we too will be competing, because many of the children that are leaving childcare at age four are going into programs like the Montessori program and such. So, we too will be competing to maintain those role, and those enrollments like other providers are now. Regarding the, the demand situation in the chart that was submitted to you, we specifically polled centers from other markets, included them on our slide, because we wanted you to understand that the demand that exists in other markets impacts Evanston, because families don't always consume childcare in the communities where they live or where they work. They mix things up based on how their family commutes. Looking at this same chart, you will see that Chicago obviously has a huge issue. And we know from having spoken to families that are waitlisted at our hospital center and families from the university and such that are commuting. Those families choose to bring their children closer to their workplace, because given traffic and such, they can't always get back to pick their children up. So, looking at the website for the Montessori program, we observed that, I think it was close to 17% of the families that enroll in the Montessori program each year are from greater Chicago area. And we find that the demand is growing as those other markets have no supply and/or they themselves are struggling to create infant and toddler slots. The programs that we included, Creme de la Creme and Knowledge Beginnings, we pointed out have opened in other markets, and they opened and are running at full capacity in that, those particular areas. And so, any of those families that are commuting from those communities into the Evanston area, they are shopping for childcare anywhere they can find it, because their centers are filled too. And those are two very large centers we wanted to point to that would potentially be offering a program that would be, I think, viewed similar to ours. I also wanted to point out that the waitlist that we maintain at the hospital, we do require parents to pay to be on that waitlist. It's not just to sign up, get on the waitlist. They have to write a check. Not too many parents write a check to be on a waitlist for a program that they don't intend to get into. So, our waitlist is very valid, and we would be happy to give you more information about that waitlist. And I think it is telltale when the institution of the university, a major employer such as the hospital, see childcare to be a very needed amenity that needs to be expanded in the community, comes out in full support of an organization. It's not specifically to say that ours is the only organization. We know that those two entities have worked with all of the local childcare programs and encourage them to expand their services as well. Lastly, I wanted to speak to the issue of low income. Our center for the hospital, we currently do serve anywhere to 15% to 20% of low-income families at the, at that particular center. We will continue to do so as we're able within the new center. And we do feel that it is important that all families have access to childcare, and we would not want to be perceived as of not being committed to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board for anyone who's spoken at this point? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak before the board on this matter before we close? Seeing none, then, we will close this matter and begin our deliberations. Are there any comments or thoughts before we run through the standards?
Well, I think it's, from my standpoint, there are two issues. From zoning urban development standpoint, it's exciting to have something happen on that block. And I'm in favor of additional childcare in the community. I'm not, in my basis, is purely anecdotal in wanting more options within Evanston. And I don't think bringing in another option will diminish the need or desire for smaller, community-based centers. I think Evanston is a very unique community, and there will be, I, I feel plenty of families who will continue to want a diverse amount, you know, selection for their children. So, in my mind, introducing yet another option that it helps large employers that will help revitalize a downtown area is a win-win situation.
In agreement?
Yes.
Same thing?
Same thing.
All right, looks like you found that sheet. I can't find it worth anything. I'm sure I got it, but... Because this is a special use, we are recommending to the City Council on this matter. Therefore, we will run through the standards as part of making our recommendation. And then, we will take a vote, because we are recommending, regardless of, regardless of, of the vote, how it comes out, that it doesn't need a for anyway, one way or another. That does go forward as our recommendation to City Council. So, reviewing the standards that we have before us, the requested special use is one of the special uses listed in the zoning ordinance. And we say that, we see that daycare for child, for children is indeed one of the applicable options for the district. Standard number two, the requested special use is in keeping with the purposes and policies of the Comprehensive General Plan and the zoning ordinance. Certainly, it is the intention of the General Plan and the ordinance to promote a mix of uses throughout, throughout the downtown district areas. And particularly, uses that can promote the further development of other businesses and retail uses in the area. So, it would seem that this standard is met, as this does appear to promote those uses as well.
I would also just make mention of the fact that, I think it was very smart of the owner of the building to maintain to retail facing on the street, because I know that one of the other cases that's come before us regarding an adult daycare center, one of our concerns was the fact that the street would appear to be closed after hours. And by maintaining, hopefully, some retail space there, it will allow the area to continue on past 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock in the evening.
Agreed, thank you very much. Standard number three, the requested special use will not have, will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types on the immediate neighborhood and the effect of the proposed type of special use upon the city as a whole. It does appear that we have had some good discussion on this matter this evening. However, as, however, has been, as has been pointed out, I, I don't think that this use, particularly given its location and the fact that I, the fact that I see it really being used by a lot of commuters that are pedestrian and dropping their children off, that may live in apartments nearby and things like that. I see it kind of as being a different, entertaining to a different market even than, than some of the other locations in Evanston. And I also note, based on the study that was provided to us, that Skokie, right next door to us, and, and close to many of those other centers, has a shortage of almost 50% of its potential demand. So, given kind of the, the cumulative effect of, of the area as a whole, it seems like certainly more spaces could be, could be accommodated. So, I believe this standard has been met as well. Standard number four, the requested special use does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. As has been discussed, this is a building which has, or a portion of a building at least, which has been tried to be redeveloped on numerous occasions. And it is certainly a great opportunity for the city to be able to get that property developed and, and back into use and liven up that, that portion of the street. So, if anything, I think it improves the, the property in that area. So, I believe this standard has been met. Standard number five, the requested special use can be adequately served by public facilities and services. We've talked a fair amount about the access to the, to the site. I think that really what makes this work is, and we'll talk about this further, but is sort of the, the alley access that it has. So, it has that access for both the services, private services required, but also any other public services. Fire safety, those sorts of things can, can easily reach multiple sides of the site and serve that space adequately, as well as the fact that it is connected to, to a major commercial center and all their kind of underground infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera, should be, should be well taken care of. So, I believe that standard has been met. Standard number six, the requested special use does not cause undue traffic congestion. The, we have seen traffic report regarding a similar space and its use, which has been reviewed by the city staff. Also, again, noting the fact that really what makes this work is the access from the alley to the surface parking lot and the access to the garage below, to make sure that those people dropping off are really getting off of Chicago and D-. and Davis and O링ton. And I see no reason for anyone to be congesting any of those streets in their drop-off, not on, particularly just because it doesn't seem very convenient to, to block any of those streets as part of your drop-off or pickup habits. So, I, I do believe that this standard has been met as well. Standard number seven, the requested special use preserves significant historical and architectural resources. It's preserving the building, so...
(laughing)
So, I, we'll take what we can get, yeah. It is, I would say, somewhat significant to the history of, the more modern history of Evanston, and, and is being improved, as has been stated, a significant investment is being placed into the property for its continuation, as well as it is maintaining the existing open space, the plaza, et cetera, that's around it. So, from that perspective, I believe that standard has been met as well. Standard number eight, the requested special use preserves significant natural and environmental features. As has been noted, the existing planter space is being preserved, there will be planters and other features placed at the roof deck level, as well as, it sounds like, other, other aspects, other sort of green initiatives to, to help out with. So, I believe this standard has been met as well. Standard number nine, the requested special use complies with all other applicable regulations of the district in which it is located, and all other applicable ordinances, except to the extent such regulations have been modified through the plan development process or the grant of a variation. It appears at this time that all, they're, they're meeting all of the standards that they need to meet in all other ordinances. We did not hear any complaints regarding their other existing location in the city, and their conformance or their compliance with their landlord in that space. So, it would appear that that standard is met as well. So, moving away from that, really quickly, in terms of a motion, I think that we do need to look at something kind of, just to codify the parking a little bit, as well as, I have from our packet of information, hours of seven AM to six-thirty PM, and I'm willing to entertain some thoughts in terms of what that should be for daycare, because that's in our district, where we've normally had wider hours, but I don't know how, why do we want to go with it.
It seems to me to make sense to, to let them at least start at six. I can see that there might be a need at some point for people going to work earlier.
Agreed.
So, I think six is fine. I'm also, you know, probably okay later, because I, I don't really think...
Well, there are health laws that kids can only stay certain hours, so I think that'll dictate, but...
Okay.
I don't know how late.
Eight?
I mean, I don't know, typically when we're putting hours on things, we're doing it for restaurants, which continue to operate as restaurants.
Right.
If we're establishing this special use as a daycare center for children, it will only continue to be a daycare center for children. So, I can't see the hours varying greatly, like they could with a restaurant.
Right.
So, I don't know that we necessarily need to put hours of operation in on this particular special use.
I still think we should, because even though other, other, other legal institutions may, you know, may imply other rules that would be stricter than what we may or may not apply at this point in time, foreseeing the future, I know, just for sake of argument, all those other people decide that they're going to drop whatever it is they require, and they decide, and somebody decides to operate a daycare center that can actually have kids there all night. I'm just... I'm just, for, for sake, for sake of argument.
Right.
Well, I mean, and I'd say go six to midnight, if you want to have hours on it. I can't see children being there at midnight, but at least then they have hours.
Yeah, I just feel better if we had something.
Yeah, I would agree with that, it's sort of belt and suspenders.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think six to midnight. Is midnight when we all let the food places stay open? Do we really go to midnight?
Down there, yeah.
Sometimes we even go later down there.
Okay. So, six to midnight, and then we have twenty, I'm going to get this wrong.
How specific do you want to be on parking? I mean, don't you just want to say in compliance with what they've presented?
Yeah, I think if it's, if, if, if they... Maintain, if they, if they maintain a, if they maintain a lease agreement for the spaces outlined in our information, I think that's...
Okay.
That covers us.
Okay.
But just something to the effect that they would maintain a lease agreement for what they've represented, they would maintain.
One spot for a hundred kids, basically.
One parking spot.
I think those are, any other concerns? Okay. Shoot.
In the matter eleven ZMJV zero-zero-eight-zero regarding sixteen-twenty-nine O링ton Avenue, the special use application, I would recommend, or suggest that we recommend approval to the City Council of the proposed project, as outlined in the documents which have been submitted to us and in the presentation from Bright Horizons this evening, with the two stipulations, that hours of operation not exceed from six AM until twelve PM midnight, and that the Bright Horizons group maintain lease agreements for the parking, for a minimum number of parking that they have outlined in their proposal to us this evening.
Just to clarify, I might have been hearing things, you said six AM, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
I thought I heard a PM, sorry. It's been moved to second, and for a positive recommendation with conditions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion is carried unanimously, so good luck with your presentation to City Council. And with that, we are going to take a five-minute break, and we will come back to start our next case.
I know, there's a lot of...
How you doing?
Double information, little bits of new information.
Yeah, so I've...
Thanks. When are you guys going to start construction or hope to? Great?
Where's Hawaii and where's Alaska?
Hawaii is actually like...
No, 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 it's way south.
It's not as far north as Hawaii.
I had to turn on my heat in my office today.
No, because it should be like, have the size of...
Those are slightly off, though.
Oh, that's cute, Mary.
This one needs to be more like this, because those are actually much longer.